I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. On Monday, September 20th, 21, 2021, at 6:04. Roll call, please.
Director Roberson. Director Adams.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Malik.
Here.
Director Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Paul.
Here.
And Chair Edwards.
Here.
All directors are present.
Okay, will you please stand for the pleasure allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Laredo. We need to report out from closed session. I suggest that we do that right after the general manager's report, which is our traditional time to do.
All right, thank you. Do we have to vote on that?
No, sir, as long as you allow me to speak.
You can speak. Okay, our next item, oral communications. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar information items? Closed session item or matters not listed on the agenda may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Okay, Joel, oral communication is open.
Right, so if you would like to make public comment during oral communications, please raise your hand. Or if you're calling in, push star nine. And Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
Thank you. Our next item is consent calendar. Do anyone wish anything pulled from the consent calendar from the board? If none, do anyone in the public want anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move to approve the consent calendar. Adams.
Okay, Director Adams, do we have a second?
Okay.
Director Anderson gave the second. Any comments? More comments on the question? If none, roll call, vote please.
Director Riley. You're muted, Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Anderson. I'll return back to Director Anderson. Director Roberson.
Yes.
Director Malik.
Yep.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Motion passed, seven zero, thank you. Next item, general manager.
Thank you. I can screen share. Joel, do you have it up? At this point, the...
Yes, I do have it up.
Yeah, I'll have you do it because I think it's covered up on my screen.
Directors, are you able to see the general manager's report?
Yes.
Great, let's go to the next page. And we remain in this period where the change from just Carmel River and seaside groundwater to a greater multiple of water sources has wreaked some havoc on the form of reporting. But what you can see here is the Carmel River Basin actual is below the target. The target was reduced due to the missed milestone and the letter from the state board. But when you add everything up across the page, the actual 11 months year-to-date remains below the target. And we're looking pretty good. The problem, of course, is it doesn't tell all the story. We go to the next slide. You can see the impact that Pure Water Monterey is having. In this particular case, a negative number is good, that we're actually delivering more than was expected and budgeted from Pure Water, and that's because it's operating in a very consistent fashion right now. And then San City D cell is 18 over last month, so they're actually producing. You know, we usually have them budgeted somewhere around 25 acre feet per month. So we've had mixed reviews on the performance of the San City D cell, but it has performed relatively well the last three months. Next slide. This is production for customer service, which is our proxy for demand. And the takeaway here is down in the lower right-hand corner, and that's the total for this year-to-date. Knowing that we've got one more month to report in the water year is 64 acre feet below last year at this time, which means we haven't seen a significant uptick in demand. The next slides, we can go very quickly because they're going to tell the same story we've been telling for the last two months. It hasn't rained. Next slide. And this is, the red line is the cumulative rainfall at the San Clemente Rain Gauge Station. And you can see that it's been a horizontal line for the last three months, no rain. And finally, the last slide. Even the lack of rain hasn't completely translated to a total lack of stream flow. But you can see that August was challenged. It was almost imperceptible. There are many dry reaches of the river. You probably noticed that out on your hikes or walks, and when we did the tour of the Sleepy Hollow facility, you heard from staff that, you know, all the drying reaches, you got to see the fruits of their labor sitting there in the channel at the rearing facility. So we've had quite a bit of dryback. And we'll just have to wait and see what happens in November through February and see if we can rain our way out of it or if we're going to have a second year like this. And that concludes my GM report. However, I do want to show you a couple of things. I'm just going to hold this up to the screen. This is the weekly. We did a full-page ad with respect to the governor's executive order calling for a 15% voluntary reduction in water consumption. And this ad contains reminders as to what water waste is, urging the public not to be water wasters, as well as reminding businesses for key aspects of their need to contribute to the cutback. And then I wanted to share this. I don't know how many of you read The Pinecone. But there's a cute little picture of the Halloween parade from a recent year. And I thought the caption, well, so it's a little boy in a stroller and a prison convict outfit and his older sister in a policeman's outfit. And this was from The Pinecone this week. And this is editor Paul Miller's sense of humor related to all the water discussion we're having. He says, "No, he didn't wash his car without a shut-off nozzle. This young man is just enjoying the city's Halloween parade alongside his arresting officer." One recent year. So even there, there's recognition that water waste is a crime and there are repercussions. And I thought that was pretty funny to see it in the caption. So that's just a little update on what's going on around us, and that concludes the GM report.
All right, thank you, GM. Any questions to the GM? Director Riley.
Yeah, just a quick question, Dave. Does the 15% voluntary reduction suggest any additional actions of the district? Is it just more ads or what?
Right. We are, and this, for those of you on public outreach and water demand, we've been toying with two letters, one to the hospitality entities for additional outreach and reminders as to, you know, it's only served water when asked in a restaurant, the placards and, you know, win-in-service displays in the hotels. So we're trying to clean up that list and get a letter together that will be targeted. And then we're talking about what additional outreach we might do. But because it's all voluntary and it comes at this odd time of the year, where most of the irrigation is going to be done, you know, pretty much by the end of this heat wave that we're experiencing now, you know, off into early October. So the savings, the call for savings is a little bit of a poorly timed call for savings. But we're going to stay on it with voluntary measures, but no mandatory measures. And our second phase, so first phase is we're always in a prohibition on water waste. The second phase is more public outreach and more enforcement on water waste. And so you'll get a fix-it ticket for something that's observed, you know, irrigation running into the street. If it's observed again, then you'll get a first fine. And then there could be a second fine. And we've never really had to go to any administrative actions because people typically do fix the problem with notice. But that would be the phase we would get into. The third phase, our incentive rates also could be thought of as penalty rates, where rates would have to go up to issue an economic incentive to reduce your consumption. So it still falls to the user. It's not rationing, it's self-rationing. And then the fourth phase is rationing. So I don't foresee us going into phase three or four unless there's a severe dry, critically dry or dry year this coming year. So now it's just, it's information outreach and a little more enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Adams. Go ahead.
Dave, has there been any kind of dialogue with the public at all about what the ramifications of rationing would be? What would it look like?
Yeah, not this year. And we did, of course, go through it all. We actually rewrote the whole plan during the four-year drought. And again, thinking about the public outreach committee, we need to decide if we want to have that conversation. Because as I said, the practical impacts of asking people to ration now is we're already heading into that lower water use period. So I'm not sure we want to spend a great deal of effort trying to squeeze people when there's less to be squeezed from them. So I think that's the type of thing that I would encourage that we look at in the spring once we know what our water situation is. Because rationing is not good, and it falls more to the residential customer than the business customer because commercial businesses have a whole compliance regime that they've invested in. So they're using best management practices. There will be some impact on businesses, but, you know, this community is about 66% residential water use. And so that's where both you're going to get your impact and you've got greater sense of control. And it's a little more disaggregate. You can have lots of little yards go dry than giant, you know, it'd be like in front of Colton Hall or something like that where to get bang for the buck, you'd be going to schools and just killing everything, you know, killing the front lawn of the city of Monterey and, you know, these things that are symbolic, that they don't yield as much water. But again, our recommendation would be to wait until we see what signals Mother Nature gives us here through the next rainy season.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If none, we'll go to general counsel report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening to the board, members of the public and staff. I have two closed sessions to report upon tonight. The first in chronological order, the first was, the board did meet in closed session on Thursday, September 2nd at 9:15 in the morning. Six of the directors were able to be there. Supervisor Marion Adams was unable because she had a conflicting board meeting that she needed to attend. The session, there were two items on that agenda. There was a discussion of existing litigation. The Monterey Peninsula Water Management District's complaint against California American Water. That's a case pending before the Public Utilities Commission. The board did discuss potential settlement. Your negotiators at the settlement table are Mr. Stolt and myself. And the board provided general parameters that we should have returned to the table on. At that time, no reportable action was taken. The second item was a liability claim and significant exposure raised by threatened litigation. And that is the Monterey Peninsula Task Spirits Association has filed a claim against the district and has filed a draft complaint against the district, setting forth a facial challenge to ordinance 152 revenue. As to that matter, the board on a motion by Director Riley, second by Director Paul, did direct that the district retain as special counsel Michael Colentuno. And the vote on that was six in favor and one absent. That concludes my report of Thursday, September 2nd. Earlier this evening at 5:00 PM, the board considered three items in closed session. The first was public employee performance evaluation. The board did meet with Dr. Garcia, an expert in providing advice on performance evaluation standards to the board and discussed format and process going into the prospective evaluation of the general manager during this next year. And no reportable action was taken. The other two items on tonight's closed session were the same as in the September 2nd closed session, the existing litigation, the Water Management District's complaint against California American Water Company before the Public Utilities Commission, and the threatened litigation by Monterey Peninsula Task Spirits Association against the district. As to those items, there was a status report given as to the status of the complaint. No action has been taken by the Public Utilities Commission at this time. And also, further direction was given to your negotiating team to return to the bargaining table to see if there is a settlement potential. The district being hopeful that a settlement may be able to be achieved. If that is so, there's anticipated that there will be a special meeting convened in public to review the status of that and possible take action on settlement. But that depends on successful negotiation at the table. We don't have a date yet for that special meeting, but that will be announced shortly, hopefully. On the next item, which is the conference with legal counsel on the liability claim, I was able to report that Mr. Colentuno has accepted that engagement and is actively representing the district on that, but no other reportable action was taken. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, general counsel. Okay, next item, director's report include AB 1, 2, 3, 4, reports on troops, officers, and attendance in meetings. Anybody have anything to report? Go ahead, Director Adams.
So I just want to bring this to people's attention. Earlier this month, we had a meeting at the Seaside Groundwater Basin Water Master. And there, and then also at our Water Supply Planning Committee meeting, we received an overview of the groundwater sustainability plan that has been prepared for the Monterey Sub Basin. The draft plan is being released for public review over the next 90 days. The Monterey Sub Basin is in both the Marina Coast and the Salinas Valley SAs. It's a bridge between water issues on the Monterey Peninsula and in the Salinas Valley. It covers the Toro Coradatira area of my district, as well as all of the Marina Coast service area. You know, I'm like a broken record, but the need for a regional water supply project is identified in the draft plan. So I wanted to let everyone know here that this is a discussion that we will be having with other areas of the county as well. Lastly, I wanted to let you know that tomorrow, there's going to be a report back on a referral that Supervisor Phillips made about the county's ordinance that requires public ownership of desalination facilities. I know it's a topic of interest to many people, and I just wanted to comment that if you're interested and are available and would like to make comments, it's on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for tomorrow at 1:30. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to get that information in.
Thank you, Director Adams. Any other comments? Go ahead, Director Rapp.
If I could, very quickly, I was at the Water Management and Water Master meeting as well. It was a very interesting presentation by Sarah and a pretty decent discussion, I thought, as well. I think one thing that was pointed out to me, which should be of some concern to the district in the long run, is that the development proposals, as the development history in the Coradatira area in general, continues to drain some of the water that seems to be available in the seaside groundwater basin. So some of the water at the north end seems to be pulled toward development in the area that Mary was talking about. And that just puts a stress point on the seaside groundwater basin. We just need to watch that and be careful, and I know Dave's aware of it. But there's an interesting dynamic taking place hydro- hydraulic, hydrotically. And it's worth watching. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If none, we're going to move along. Okay, General Manager, public hearings.
Yeah, this will be the John Lear Show for items eight, nine, and 10.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. We are going to have a public hearing on the adoption of October through December 2021 quarterly water budget and supply strategy. So if you have the presentation, Joel, can we?
Let me pull it up.
Great, thank you. Next slide, please. So this quarterly water budget is developed in accordance with the number of interplaying rules that are all laid forward by these State Water Resources Control Board orders and as well as the district's rule on 60 targets that are going to be set at the next public hearing. And this is for water year 2022, and it's the first quarter of water year 2022. For the ASR plan, moving forward into this quarter, we tallied 66 acre feet in water year 2021. Adding that to what's in storage currently is 1,236 acre feet currently that can be scheduled for recovery out of the seaside basin. And the Quarterly Water Budget Group decided to leave this storage and have it ready if it was necessary for drought relief as we move into possibly quarters three and four of water year 2022. And then, as a reminder, ASR diversions for water year 2022 can begin December 1 according to our permits if rains support operations and the river flows get to their permitted thresholds. The same is true for Table 13, can begin December 1 if we meet our flow thresholds. And then for Pure Water Monterey operations, the Quarterly Water Budget Group decided that the demands for the first quarter of water year 2022 should be met by the Lower River, the Lower River wells, and with Pure Water Monterey recovery, thus leaving ASR in the ground as a mitigation measure for drought in the upcoming quarters. So next slide, please. It was, this budget was developed, assuming that all of the coastal seaside sub-basin area native water that's managed by the seaside adjudication decision will be recovered throughout the course of water year 2022. It again assumes that the 1,236 acre feet of ASR will be stored and called upon later if needed. It assumes a recovery of Pure Water Monterey will remain close to the injection rates to kind of hold the operational reserve at where it's at right now. We will be held steady for the first two months of this quarter. And then in December, should it rain, it would allow for pivoting. And then there is, the state board orders 9804 and 2002 that established a low-flow period and during times in the winter to deprioritize production out of the seaside basin and prioritize production on the river and support ASR injection. This quarterly water budget was developed on September 10th of this year by the group, which is the district, CalAM, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, NOAA Fisheries, and the State Water Resources Control Board. Next slide, please. Looking forward at the NOAA seasonal precipitation outlook for this quarter, we can see that we fall in the equal chances band. I have read some discussion of La Niña surface water temperatures, which typically in this area deliver slightly warmer and less precipitous winters. But we do land with their climate modeling in the equal chances zone. Next slide, please. This will be this component of this month. This is the Rule 162, 160 target numbers. And wanted to make a note here to the board that this table is based on the rules that are written, hardcoded into Rule 160, when only the Carmel Valley Luvioquafer and the seaside groundwater basin were being allocated to meet demand. So this is a formulaic calculation that, and Pure Water Monterey recovery will be used to meet the demand and will be allocated out during the quarterly water budget process that we're currently in right now. But in discussions internally and with Dave, we are going to want to change Rule 160 to reflect and link it up to Rule 163, which is triggering rationing and to reflect the water portfolio as it changes to depend more upon water resources targets. Next, please. So this is the actual numbers when you take those philosophies we approach the quarterly water budget with. You can see the lower sub-units of the Carmel River are providing water for demand. In December, the lower units are also providing water. And in the upper sub-units, if we were to have flow, would be permitted to turn on and operate. And also, then some of these water would be going to injection and Table 13 diversion. These estimates are made just assuming, using the equal chances numbers and would be what you would expect to produce for both of these projects in this water right in a normal-type water year. So that's where those numbers come from. And then, as we stated earlier, that the first two months, we have Pure Water Monterey recovery at about the, you know, straddling the rate that we're injecting, trying to hold the operational reserve where it's at right now. And then we would move over and produce less out of the seaside basin according to the state board orders and focus more on injection if we were to receive a normal winter and the precipitation we would expect. But then, as always, the lower portion of the table collects all of the different waters that would need to be produced. And we do that so we make sure that we have enough of our physical facilities in place of working that we could produce this amount of water. So this is a good time to answer any questions about these numbers if there are any.
A quick question through the chair.
Go ahead, Director Rapp.
The additional pumps that are putting in place for injection, I can't remember whether it's ASR or Pure Water Monterey, but does the schedule of those pumps becoming operational affect any of the numbers into the next water year?
Yes, it will. So deep injection, so these are Pure Water Monterey injection wells. They're the deep variety, deep injection well three and four. They're both slated to come online during December of this calendar year, which means we'll have nine months of the next calendar year that fall into the water year for which that additional capacity will be usable. Very likely that Deep Injection Well 3 will be relied on first. Deep Injection Well Four, less so. The injection permit presently only allowed, and so the injection permit is a calendar year permit. All this water supply planning is on a water year basis, and our contract to sell water from Pure Water Monterey is on a fiscal year basis. So, there's quite a bit of accounting that has to take place to satisfy all three of them. But the current permit for injection is limited to thirty-seven hundred acre feet per calendar year. Monterey One Water will attempt to have that increased to about forty-three hundred acre feet, because there is additional capacity in the plant, in the, in the base, you know, part A of the plant, pre-expansion. And now, these wells will give us greater opportunity to inject more of that water. And then, that will become a little bit of a safety net for CalAM. Should it be a dry year or if ASR underperforms, you know, we're gonna try to get more, more water produced at the plant, and the wells will have an impact.
So, just as, as a follow-up and maybe a clarification, are those projected operational changes included in the projections that are made for next year or to be considered as the quarterly interest discussions go forward?
Yeah, they have not been included in the year going forward that you'll adopt the entire annual table, if you will. That has been based on an interpretation of what, what I'll call the transition year, going from the current calendar year that contains nine months of the current water year and then three months of the next water year. And then, the following nine months are all impacted by the company's legal right off the river. So, we get a little bit of potential benefit from the effective diversion limit for the remaining three months of this calendar year that are at the beginning of the next water year. And then, after that, it becomes the, the legal limits. On the Carmel River, we're in transition. So, these numbers that John has showed you do include that interpretation of the, the transition year. It might also give us some leverage to use carryover credits under the cease and desist order for a three-month period. But that's not reflected in these numbers right now, and that could be a decision, you know, to be made later. Then, as we progress and as you see quarterly water budgets, to the extent the, the then-current outlook has changed, then you'll begin to see those other sources come into play.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, just a couple of them for me. Dave, we've got, got an email today about CalAM talking to the state. We also got the last report went out to the state. Are we about to lose another thousand acre feet of water?
Indubitably, yes. And, and in fact, the, the report that you're looking at right now reflects that.
Okay, so it's already reflected. We're gonna have enough to carry us over. So, to, to take care of that thousand acre feet, that's two thousand and two years.
Yeah, and, and their endgame is January first of next calendar year, the company needs to be at their legal limit. And so, if you were to do the math on John's chart and add thirty-five hundred acre feet back to it, it comes in at just over nine thousand acre feet total. And current demand has been closer to ninety-six hundred to ninety-eight hundred. And so, that demonstrates that without a productive ASR year or increased capacity at Pure Water Monterey, there could potentially be a shortfall. And so, that's, that's what I keep calling the, the thirty-month short-term problem, that if everybody agrees to build Pure Water Monterey expansion, we have to get from here to there. And that means every one of these next two and a half years will be a little bit on the edge. So, this first transition year, by getting a little bit more advantage from the first three months, that's helpful. But the next two full years in between, we'll be on a knife's edge here, waiting for completion of the plant. So, the two easiest solutions are run Pure Water Monterey harder, get about an extra five hundred acre feet, and then hope that there's rain so that we don't completely drain the drought reserve from ASR. But if we did have to drown the, drain the drought reserve, that would get us through really more than a year in conjunction with running Pure Water Monterey harder. So, but that's the kind of planning that they'll do, that Chris Cook is really diligent on, always looking at, and John's in that conversation. But that, that'll be the focus of our attention, two and a half years of living on the edge.
So, the third, the third well that we're putting in, the plate, will be enough to do that five hundred acre feet? That they're looking for?
Yeah, the combination of the four wells with, you know, certain wells being off at certain times. There's gonna be some travel time issues that need to be investigated with Deep Injection Well Four. But yes, the, the proposal is to leverage all four of those in some way, shape, and form. But yeah.
Okay, and my last question. John, has Pure Water, has the water hit our taps yet from Pure Water?
I, yes, we've, we've seen the water at ASR that was injected at the Pure Water Monterey well field. It was about six months' travel time.
Okay. So, are we getting, are residents picking it up in a state system? That's, you know, that's, that's the question.
There, there was a component of time that ASR one was recovering to the system, and it was recovering Pure Water Monterey. There, there are some physics that happen when, when you're pumping the well and it's recovering, and the Pure Water Monterey is coming from one direction, and the, the well is capturing in a three hundred and sixty-degree fashion so that it's not one hundred percent concentrated water that was injected. It's a blend of native water and the Pure Water Monterey. So, that's an interesting point.
You, you're gonna have to drink it to find out. That's the question I'm, I'm trying to find out.
Yeah, and, and then we took ASR one offline, so we're not currently directly pulling. And the, the next nearest wells are the Peralta Well and ASR Number Three as an extraction well. And you would not, at this point in time, be seeing, I don't think so, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that we've seen Pure Water molecules make it that far yet.
No, we've not seen the signature of the water at Peralta ASR Three or, or Grove.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Go ahead there, Sue Biden.
Thank you. Two questions. One, can you describe what you mean when you say run Pure Water Monterey harder, and what are the pros and cons of that?
Yeah, so, there's, there's really no downside. The, ultimately, the plant design was upsized between preliminary design and final design. And so, there is additional capacity. So, we were working on serving, you know, thirty-five hundred acre feet to CalAM. And then, a component, and I'm gonna get this number wrong, but let's just say six hundred-plus acre feet to Marina Coast Water District. And they don't, they may be taking their water shortly, but as long as they don't need their water, we can go ahead and take that water. But then, there's additional capacity, and there is additional source water. So, it's just like we built the plant a little bigger than we had contracts for. And so, if we just, you know, collectively, the Royal, we, Monterey One Water and ourselves, determine that we want to produce two hundred additional acre feet, three hundred or five hundred, the capacity exists to do so.
That's good to know. Thank you. And then, the other question is, it sounds like we're okay for now, but it is without question, just worrisome that what this might look like in the spring if we don't get the rain that we need. And I'm just wondering, in your recent destruction, conversation with the, with the others who are developing the quarterly strategy by CalAM and National Marine Sanctuary Fisheries, the California Fish and Wildlife, and the State Water Board, are they expressing concern about water supply availability in the, in the near term? You know, what's everybody talking about, both near term and long term? And does anybody have a farmer's almanac? You know, that's...
Right. Well, Director, the, the different groups are approaching the meeting with different goals. My California, American Water and the district is trying to work with the environmental groups to produce water, enough water safely for the community and work with them to address their concerns of water for the environment. And, but, but we, we try to meet in the middle with the rule sets. So, the groups that you would expect, the district and CalAM are, are, are watching water supply for the community closely, and the, the regulatory, environmental regulatory agencies, they, they do have a good understanding of the, the, the pickle we're in right now. And so, they're still watching it for them, but they're realizing we're in the middle of a drought, and, and, and we've worked very hard, myself and Chris, that I believe they have a, a good understanding of the rules and the position we're in.
Thanks very much.
Okay, any more questions? We need a motion and a second. Well, before we do that, Joel, open it up for public comment.
Yes, so if you would like to make public comment on item number eight, please raise your hand. So, at this time, let me share my screen. And Directors, are you able to see the timer?
Can see it.
John, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you very much, Joel. Thank all the board members for the hard work. Let's hope that, and it does rain. Let's just hope that it does rain, because this strategy is coming upon that over the next few years. Chips are all in for Pure Water Monterey. It's necessary, and it's, it's a project that's fully supported. It's part of the overall water supply project that was agreed upon with the State Water Resources Control Board to put the CDO in place that we were supposed to be meeting. So, the chips are all in on that, and additionally, you know, trade-for-rain strategy is concerning. I think it'd be time to develop a plan for a long-term drought strategy, should that be the case. And lastly, I'd like to say that it's difficult to hear that demand is being met. So, need is barely being met. You know, we have a certain water supply that is coming out of the sources we have. And it is not necessarily what this community needs to be helping. We can ration, we can hold back, but in the long term, we need to make sure we have above-supply projects that work for this community. Thank you very much.
All right, seeing no more hands, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
I'm of approval of the quarterly water budget.
Second.
Thank you all. I was at my front door. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
So, that was a motion by Riley, seconded by Malik. Roll call vote now. Director Malik?
Aye.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Bermuda.
Director Adams?
Aye. There we go.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
Passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
You still up, John?
I think there's a presentation for this one as well, Joel.
Yes, let me pull it up.
Thank you. So, this is a public hearing for item nine, the considering the adoption of, of the Rule one sixty tables for the regulatory projects that are used in combination with creating the quarterly water budgets. So, next slide, please. So, it, Rule one sixty in our, sets forth the production targets that we're going, that the MPWD, MPWMD uses for the expanded water conservation and standby rationing plan. The Tables one, two, and three in the rule go through and set forth year-to-date targets to meet the, to be met at the end of each month to make sure that the water is being used in a way that will last for the entire water year. And it requires, the rule requires modification of these tables by board resolution. Next slide, please. It's driven by, primarily by the cease and desist order, which we've talked a lot about, and the seaside adjudication decision, setting the limits for the Carmel Valley Luvio Aquifer and seaside groundwater basin. As we had said in the quarterly water budget hearing, that Pure Water Monterey is not yet incorporated into the rules and, and the methodologies of creating these tables. And as Dave said, with this transition year, it is a good time to bring this back through the board committees and have the board, should, should it please change these tables and these methodologies to use Pure Water Monterey in Rule one sixty and bring it more in line with the water supply portfolio that we're on transition to. Next slide, please. The numbers that go into this modification of these tables are four thousand one hundred and ten acre feet from the Carmel River sources. The reasoning is, was explained earlier by, by Dave. And then, the fourteen seventy-four from the coastal areas, Laguna Seca has fallen to zero under the adjudication decision and is another reason to modify these Rule one sixty tables, because the old methodologies seek to ration the Laguna Seca sub-area available production, which has now fallen to zero. And if you add all these together, you get five thousand five hundred and eighty-four for all of the Monterey Peninsula Water Resources system sources. And then, we see this second bullet, the remainder of Water Year 2022. To man, we met with Pure Monterey and ASR recovery. And so, we want to seek to modify this rule so that it comes in line with the water resources projects now operating. Next slide, please. So, the methodology put forth in the rule is to take this region of, specific region of production years, and then to go through and figure out the production by percent by month, and then multiply the total amount available from the Monterey Peninsula Water Resources system, thus allocating that amount by month. Next slide, please. When we do that for the entire system, for the Carmel Valley Luvio Aquifer and for the seaside basin, this is the, the mathematics and how they turn out. And then, we get the end of the water year, five thousand five hundred and eighty-four. And we know that we will need to use additional supplies of Pure Water Monterey and ASR to reach a total systemed amount for Water Year 2022. However, these are the express methodologies of Rule one sixty to prepare these tables and modify them. So, we have a Table one, which is the entire system, and next slide, please. Table two, which is Laguna Seca system, which has fallen to zero, and then Table three. And, yeah, thank you, Joel, is the four thousand one hundred and ten acre feet available from the Carmel Valley Luvio Aquifer. So next slide, please. So the recommendation is to adopt um, the modification of these tables for Rule 160 for the CalM systems for water year 2022 to be um, supplied from the Carmel Valley Illuvial Aquifer system. And then um, should it be adopted to direct staff to um, put these tables and to the, the, make the changes to the rules and regulation, rules and regulations, and then to fight, file a notice of exemption for SEQA for compliance of this action at Monterey County. And that concludes my presentation.
And I, I need to add something because the resolution as drafted refers to the attachment. Um, and attachment one in your packet has a footnote. And John's template was not updated from the board action that we took about three months ago, where we added one sentence to the footnote. And I will read you that sentence shortly, just so that you're voting on the, the right thing. But you'll, by adoption of the resolution, you adopt these tables as the attachment and there is a change in that footnote. So at the very end of the footnote for table 15 dash one, the board uh, by resolution uh, adopted this sen- sentence uh, at the very end, "For purposes of Rule 163 dot A dot three and Rule 164 dot A dot three, the annual production limit shall add the expected production from all water supply projects, comma, including Pure Water Monterey and the Sand City Desalination Facility, period." And so that goes to address what John was saying is as we move into these other sources of supply, we're going to have to get in here with a, an ordinance to clean both the language and the tables up and then the templates for future tables and get them all consistent. But you have already adopted that sentence uh, previously and it should appear in appendix one or uh, attachment one of this resolution.
Okay, any board questions? Go ahead, Director R.
I'm sorry, I have, I have two questions. I think they're small. In the resolution near the bottom of the whereas clauses, it makes reference to the seaside groundwater uh, basin water master has not yet determined the amount of carryover credit. I didn't know they had a role to play in the carryover credit. Can you explain a little bit of that to me?
Yeah, there's, there's two places the word carryover credit gets used. Under the cease and desist order, as the community's demand has been below the effective diversion limit, that difference of, for good performance was put into a bank and over the years it accumulated. And in years, once a milestone has been missed in order to uh, meet whatever the then current milestone is, there is a provision that allows the use of carryover credit. And so that carryover credit is State Water Board's interpretation of the CDO. The water master also has a carryover credit program whereby when alternative producers don't use all of their supply and the standard producers such as CalM uh, and Seaside Municipal uh, have not used all of theirs, then the unused portion of the unpumped water gets reallocated to the standard producers for use in the following year. And that's determined to be carryover credit. Different concept, different agency, but same name.
Okay, well, thank you for that, because I didn't, I didn't realize they had a, a role to play in the carryover credit. The other question I have is on the next page. It's on uh, table 5.1. Uh, the 1474, the amount of water that's allowed to be taken from the seaside groundwater basin. When does that number become uh, applicable uh, in the course of just things that are unfolding in the future?
Yeah, or maybe the question can be asked differently. When it, when does it become inapplicable?
Okay, yes.
Be- because CalM has expressed a desire and the water master has discussed and approved of uh, the concept of once a permanent, long-term water supply is available, CalM could then leave 700 acre feet in the seaside basin for 25 years to replenish its deficit. And that does, it may be a little higher because there's been delays, um, but generally, if you think of it that way, then the 1474 would drop to 774. And that's what they would be taking from the seaside basin on a, on a regularly scheduled annual basis. And they'd leave 700 in until the 26th year when they get that water back per se.
But that's only triggered when there's a new water supply. Is that true? Okay.
Any other board questions? If none, Joel, let's take it out to the public.
Yes, so if you would like to make public comment on this matter, uh, please raise your hand. And Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
All right, thank you. Need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to approve.
Director Malik, approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Would the
Okay.
Would the recommender and the seconder um, uh, uh, agree to add the sentence that I read to you that you've already approved for the footnote but didn't make it into this packet?
Yes.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Malik and a second by Director Clyde. Uh, any comments on the motion? If none, roll call vote please.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item. GM, action item.
Yep, this is also John Lear and this is related to the destruction of the shallow monitoring well known as Ford Orde 09. Go ahead, John. You're, you're on mute.
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is item 10, an action item. Um, it's to consider recommending the board to, to enter into a contract with Major Brothers for the amount of $25,000 to destroy monitor well known as Ford Orde 9 Shallow. The, the brief history of this is that's over the, the last, since 2008, this Ford Orde 9 has been sampled quarterly according to the monitoring and maintenance plan that was uh, associated with monitoring um, that is uh, charged given a charge given to the water master based on um, the monitoring and maintenance plan. And it puts forth a monitoring schedule um, of quarterly and it's used in the seawater intrusion analysis report. It had been being watched over the recent um, years to um, slight upticks in chloride and um, you know, conductivity. Um, and it would had hit a threshold point um, that required more investigation. And we did some more investigation on it and found that the, the well had been compromised. Uh, it was determined that water was leaking into the well at about 120 feet below surface and the well uh, was not producing data that could um, be, no longer be used in any analyses. Um, the district uh, reached out to the Environmental Health Board of Monterey County and worked with their director to come up with the plan that would destroy the shallow completion of Ford Orde 9 Shallow and would allow the district um, and the water master and Marina Coast to retain Ford Orde 9 deep and can, it can stay into the uh, monitoring networks. Um, under direction of the board, district staff opened a public bid for the destruction work on um, on 7/12/21 and closed the bid window on 8/11/21. We received one bid uh, from Major Brothers in the amount not to exceed $25,000 to complete the work as a lump sum. This work was not expected um, when the budget was created and so it was not budgeted when we did thi- this work back in June. So the cost to destroy this well uh, shall be added to the hydrologic monitoring line of the budget during the mid-year budget adjustment um, upcoming in January 2022. And the staff recommendation would be to direct the general manager to enter into this contract and complete this work.
Okay, um, any questions to the, from the board? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I think my question has been answered from your comment, but I just, I know that we have our water projects in the close vicinity to that um, the well that is being uh, taken down. I just want to assume that we are going to be working with the seaside water masters, Marina Coast to plan for continued monitoring of that particular site. So um, my hope is that that's what you were describing and there's no worry about that since it's an important area to us.
The um, the, the deep completion is used for our project operations. And it's, and it's, it's in our um, permits uh, to inject water that, however, the shallow completion is not a completion that is, that is uh, any type, any permitted requirement for our project operations. And, and I know that there's been um, correspondence back and forth between the water master, Marina Coast and the district, but that correspondence is, is happening above uh, m- my staff level.
Okay, let's see. I'll turn to the dog and see if they don't know. So um, Dave, do you have any comment on that? I mean, I am worried about it that was, that we're not going to be doing any monitoring there at all?
No, the, the plan is, the, the water master needs monitoring there, although a letter we received today kind of tells the story somewhat inaccurately. Um, we haven't heard back from Marina Coast Water District yet, but we did correspond with them suggesting that we come up with some cost sharing agreement. Um, we pegged ours at about 15 to 20% rather than a third, a third, a third. Because we don't actually need it for any specific purpose other than the general monitoring of the water resource system. But the uh, water master needs it for monitoring and the Marina Coast uh, Groundwater Sustainability Agency needs it for their purposes. So we'll get to some form of agreement. Um, we're just getting started uh, having formal discussions on that. I did call uh, Rem, the general manager at Marina Coast Water District to let him know that the letter was coming. I, I didn't give the water master a heads up, but I did send it to uh, their chairman and he has since responded. So, yeah, I think we have an interest in seeing monitoring continue, but it's not as important an obligation for us as it is for the others. You know, we, we do a lot of work on behalf of the water masters, so um, they may be mixing up their, their needs with our performance on their needs. And thinking that it's our need, but um, but we'll do something. Uh, we don't want to, you know, that there are sentinel wells which are designed to really anticipate sea level, or I'm sorry, seawater intrusion coming directly from the ocean. So this type of thing, if it were actually seawater intrusion, which they concluded it was not, it was kind of cross-contamination uh, would have reflected flow coming from the north um, which would be a little uh, I mean, it's, it's something people should want to know. So there's probably a need for a shallow monitoring well there, but um, our needs are met with the, the deep monitoring well.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, Director R.
Yeah, quick question. How do you destroy a well?
Fill it with concrete.
Okay.
Okay, uh, one thing for me, GM, could you send the board all those letters that we've been getting from Paul Bruno? That we've been sending out so they can, I think uh, Director Riley probably got something from me because they were talking about it.
Yeah, you got it from, you got it from me too. So I think
Okay, well.
On the water master. Yeah.
Send, send it, send it out to the full board so everybody knows what's going on with that. I appreciate it. Okay, any, uh, Joel, let's open it up to the public on this.
Yes, as a reminder, um, if you would like to make public comment on item number 10, you would need to raise your hand. And at this time, uh, Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay, need a motion and a second.
I move that we I move we authorize the uh, the contract.
From Vice Chair?
I'll second.
Second from Director Adams. Any comments on the question? If none, roll call vote please.
Director Roberson?
Yeah, I'm here. Joel, while I have you, I can't get my video back up. It says the host has stopped it.
Right. Uh, turn on your video in just a second.
Thank you. That was a yes.
Uh, Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero, thank you. Next act, action item, GM.
Yep, our last item tonight is item 11. This is uh, authorization to extend three existing contracts as reflected in A, B, and C, as well as initiate a new contract uh, which is item D. These were all unanimously approved by the administrative committee. They represent both new services requested as well as updating old material already provided. The updating reflects kind of a uh, a duplication of costs primarily solely due to the extension in time that LAFCO has taken on our approval process. But uh, just kind of at a summary level, because the staff notes a little more detailed and you do see services uh, offered by RefTelus and by Somus in the board packet. The Rootan and Tucker is additional legal services uh, as the board moves into the phase of considering making a bona fide offer and then potentially adopting a resolution of necessity. There will be uh, the writing of the resolution and all of its findings. And there's some updating to be done on the findings. The most recent draft was uh, July or August of last calendar year and many things have happened since then. And they've uh, have also been weighing in on providing advice to uh, district council and myself on uh, letters that CalM's attorneys have written at various stages of the process, both on the SEQA case uh, and now on the LAFCO process. The item B is RefTelus, the financial consultant. This is to update the appraisal work that they had done. They were ready to go in October, November of last calendar year, which means their work would have been good for six months. We're past that at this point, so they're preparing to update their analysis, which also includes rechecking the economic outcomes to show that there's still ratepayer savings and then responding to some of the things that have been raised in LAFCO letters from outside entities about rates and a variety of other questions that you will want answered before you make your decision as a board. The third, or item C, is the real estate component of the appraisal. And as you know, the real estate market has radically changed under COVID. So even though uh, Mr. Carnegie did the real estate evaluation, again with that October, November timeframe in mind, typically appraisal can be valuable on the shelf for about a six-month period, as I mentioned earlier, and so we need to update this. He has quite a bit of budget left over in his original contract, so we don't think he's going to need really a majority of this authorization, um, but we want to be sure. And then finally is the uh, survey, we need to get uh, a legal description uh, verbal, you know, written out legal description of all the meets and bounds of the annex parcels, as well as getting the packet together of maps uh, in a format that the State Board of Equalization will accept. And so this is And so this is a surveying entity inside of Somus. We've used Somus for construction management. We've not used this service from them. But our GIS people have a good relationship with Somus and they've been able to exchange data and facilitate this process. But it's, it's entirely in support of our LAFCO application. When LAFCO files a notice of completion, they send to the state board of equalization this information and we need it in a form that the state board will accept. Their requirements were included in the exhibits to this item in the board packet. So all told, you know, if I, if I had to kind of just weigh how much of this is new money and how much of this is repeating work that's already been done, I'd say about forty percent is repeating work that's already been done, thirty to forty percent, which is in effect saying these delays and interventions by outside parties have cost us. And, you know, I think we anticipated that, that, you know, that the playbook in these kind of situations are to fight at every possible battle site, which is why we have a CEQA lawsuit and we've got LAFCO challenges and so forth, and to cost us money and drain us. We have the, the new complaint over the water supply charge, which we think is related to these things. So I don't like spending money twice on the same product, but clearly we need to update information in order for you to be fully informed when you want to decide to make an offer if you do.
Any more questions? No more questions? General Manager, you had a meeting with LAFCO on Friday? Is anything, anything new that they want is not in this package right now? That we will have to later?
That is correct, but so we had two meetings last week, district council, myself and their executive director, staffer, and council. And Friday was when we talked, so Monday was when we talked more about schedule and what we need and when we might need it. You know, even simple thing like we need to know if our latent powers are approved or conditionally approved before we go to a bench trial. And frankly, before you had adopted a resolution of necessity, you could do that anyway, anticipating that you're going to get your latent powers approved. But it would be embarrassing to go in front of a judge and say, yeah, we want to acquire this monitoring water system, but we're not even sure we've got permission to, to do so or to, to run it, you know, as our latent powers. So we talked about schedule on that one. And then on Friday, we talked about some of the outcomes of the third-party review and whether or not additional information was going to be requested. It looks like there will not be additional information or additional work to be done. And, and one of the things I was concerned about was updating for the general rate case. The general rate case hasn't been approved yet. But as you look at Ref Telus's scope of services, they intend to update a lot of their assumptions based on the general rate case. So some of the new work is things that we would expect, not that were requested from LAFCO.
Okay. Timeline. I ask you to develop a new timeline for us. When can we get that? Next month or?
Yeah, it's going to have to be next month because based on our Monday call and, and Dave and I have, Dave Laredo and I have not gotten back together to discuss it. But I have some confusion over LAFCO's own timeline, so we're going to have to nail that one before I can tell you what it is.
Okay.
They, they did say something disconcerting in our second call, which sounded to me like they said they have up to a year to file the notice of completion.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, and, and so Dave and I, Dave's got his hand up. I don't know where he can add here.
Who are they?
Uh, Dave Laredo.
Oh, I know him.
Oh.
God, I can't see.
That looks like your hand.
Oh.
Joel, you know, his, his hand was raised.
Okay, now George Riley, Director Riley hand was raised.
Yeah, that was, that was my question too. Does it look like LAFCO will take this up in October or are we looking at maybe November?
No, they'll do the hearing October twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And you're right, Dave Laredo, is my little cursor had turned into a hand that was on your box.
No, George. Okay, any other question from the board? Let's, if not, let's take it out to the public.
Yes, so if you would like to make public comment on item number eleven, please raise your hand. Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay. I need a motion and a second on this four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Director Malik made the motion. Do we have a second, Director Rob?
I'll second.
Okay, you want to be on on it? Any other comments?
Actually, I wanted to add something orally that's in the staff note and that's none of this money was budgeted and will have to come from district reserves.
Okay, we'll be looking for a future cost on, on how much we're going to spend up to now i- 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 for, for the public because it's building up this another one. Okay, one more question, GM. GM, are we going to time this that when we will make our offer? That we don't do this work this early and LAFCO hold us up for another two months? And next thing you know, the, the stuff is getting stale again.
Yeah.
Really can take another five hundred thousand.
Yeah, and that's exactly the, the type of question we need to clarify because even though we approve this or if we approve this tonight, I don't want to give our consultants a new timeline that gets too far in front of LAFCO's timeline. So we need to nail down you know, usually critical path means the, the things that have to happen and depend on each other. Here, we have to find out which one's the slowest and then time all our other activities around that one.
Please do.
Yeah.
And let us know, I'll get to public. Okay, if none, roll call vote please.
Director Malik?
Yeah.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero. All right, any information items? Any board members want to pull any information for staff reports? If none, General Manager, you have anything else?
Nope, we're good.
You have anything else?
No, I do not, sir.
All right, meaning adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.